Okay, so knowing the time and the presence of the quorum, we've already called the board to order. I will start how we always do with citizens' concerns. So are there any citizens' concerns for issues not otherwise on our agenda? Tara.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I'm concerned that the process for 40B project approval seems to be a little backwards. That ACHC, the Housing Corporation, who wants as much affordable housing as possible, looks at the projects and helps the developer maximize the numbers of units. And staff then goes along with the thing until it's a full-blown project being presented to you. And the pro forma numbers with all the financials where we can actually see that a smaller project could be, meet the percentage profit that's required under affordable housing programs, could be doable. And so then your letter of support goes out before we've even had a chance to look at the pro forma numbers which haven't been released to the public until the day effectively of your vote. So I'm hoping that we can change that process to be more sensitive to the neighborhoods and certainly to get the affordable housing that we need. Engage in the condo buy-down program so that we can get 10 or 20 units a year for the cost of like $100 to $150 a year per household. I think it's a much better solution than what we're engaging in now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. I don't want to get into back and forth. Some of it's not correct, correct, but yes.
Well, actually, I can just say, I'm looking for a new Board of Selectmen sponsor because Chin Sung was our, working with us, so we're hoping.
You can email members individually if you have any. Yes.
Okay, this, excuse me, Chris Starr, Six Little Field Road, Acton, 19-year resident Acton. Anyway, this is not on the agenda, so I understand this is only for non-agenda items. I just wanted to announce that we're forming the Kelly's Corner Coalition. This is a coalition of public interests and private businesses working together and joining together to make a better Kelly's Corner. These are small businesses, landowners, also concerned parents about the connection on Charter Road, about their school kids. And also people interested in making sure that the mature trees that line the streets are saved and protected. I just wanted to say that we have, we have a Facebook page that we're starting up, @KCCActon. And also if you, if anybody was interested in the Kelly's Corner Coalition, we're looking for people to join us at, send us an email at kccacton@gmail.com. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Paul.
Hi, I'm Paul Melchody. I live on Shady Lane. I wanted to, came here to remind you and invite you again to the ribbon cutting for the new section of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. It's this Friday at 3:30 at Nara Park. And everyone in Acton is invited. And you, even selectmen, or especially selectmen. So it's a great time to celebrate. There's obviously more to be done, but it's a great time to celebrate. So come join us.
Great, thank you, Paul. Yes, I think many of us will be there, and that's part of my chairman's update, which I will get into next, so.
Wait.
Oh, more, okay.
Oh, question. So I wanted to know if there's any progress on the water, the town meeting voted to ask you to do a water study, and I was wondering if there was an update on that.
We had an update from the rack a while ago about the sort of charrette that they're putting together as an initial step in thinking about a water study this fall. And so we're working with them on that.
The workshop, I guess they're calling it, right? And then our last question is that a lot of people when I was running for office had asked about planning and development over growth. And I had made mention about cumulative planning, that every project is no impact, no impact, no impact, no impact, and then over time, there's a lot of impact. So the progressive way of planning includes cumulative effects and cumulative impacts. And I'm hoping that you guys have been talking about that.
We'll take it under consideration, Tara.
Thank you.
You mentioned it before. Okay, great. Seeing no other people standing, I will now move on to the chairman's update. So last Thursday was the Acton's annual Star Dinner where we congratulated and thanked employees who've been serving in the town for 10, 20, 30, and 40 years. And as always, it was a great event and our Mr. Manager's last Star Dinner. And thank you very much for his support for that and coming up with it and for many years. It's been a great way to, I think, recognize the many, many, many years of service by our town employees. As Paul mentioned, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail ribbon cutting is this Friday, May 11th, at 3:30 at Nara. And shortly thereafter, there will be the volunteer recognition event at 5:00 PM that night, also at Nara, which we will be discussing in further detail a little bit later on our agenda. And we're hoping to see many people at both events. There's an information forum on 53 River Street this Wednesday, May 9th, at 7:00 PM in this room. And I think it will be an update on where they are in that sort of master planning process. As a note to Acton residents, the Recreation Department is instituting a parking sticker program at Nara starting this summer. So this will be, require people to pay a fee to park on certain weekend days or very, other very busy days. But all Acton residents can receive one free sticker per household. Or if you have a beach membership, you can get a sticker. So you can pick those up Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:30 at the Recreation Department, which is in the old senior center at 50 Audubon Drive. And between now and May 21st, they also have special Monday evening hours from 5:00 to 8:00 PM and Saturday morning hours from 9:00 to 12:00. And then after May 25th, you can also pick up the sticker at the Recreation Department or at the Nara Bath House. And those Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 hours. Again, otherwise, it's a $5 fee. There are some spaces that are designated for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail as well, but you can get more information about that on the Recreation Department's website. The Acton Boxcar Cultural Council Film Series is continuing for two more Fridays. So they have the showing of Chocolat this Friday, May 11th, and Yellow Submarine the following Friday, May 18th. Both are at 7:00 PM in this room and are free and open to the public. And that is all I have, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. And just the star event, all the folks we honored totaled over 600 years of service to the town of Acton, most of which was Dicky Waite, I think. We, in the last week, under the rules of labor, collective bargaining, had a session with both, both the teamsters who represent the dispatch and then AFSM that represents highway municipal properties and cemetery. We just basically did ground rules. We've reached agreement with both unions that we won't have any other bargaining sessions until the next manager's on board, so all we did was ground rules. We're working on a license for a coffee truck to locate down at the South Acton Train Station. The folks we're working with, it's named after one of my favorite bluesmen, Muddy Waters is the name of, and you may have seen the truck on 2A in the morning. They've been kind of hitting the commuter traffic. So, and talking to council, they felt a license was the best way to go. Doesn't really elevate to a bit or anything like that. So we're going to give it a go and see, see how it, how it works. Finally, the library trustees, right now are still in the process of interviewing two people for, for library director. I met with both of those folks one-on-one today. One is an internal candidate, one is from out of state. And it's their hope that they will make a recommendation to me by the end of this week or early next. And that's my report.
Great. Well, I'm also a Muddy Water fan and a train station user. That sounds wonderful, although not a coffee drinker, so hopefully they have tea. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Of course, we have the request for extension of operating hours for Round Table LLC at 166 Great Road. Is there anybody here from, okay, yes, could you just come up and tell us your name and your request?
Sure. Tony Masgren, 236 Newtown Road, opening up the Holy Grail Pub and Restaurant at 166 Great Road. And I'm applying to extend the hours that are on the license from 11:00 AM till 10:00 PM until midnight. At the time I applied, I didn't put specific hours on there and assumed they would be what we had before, what the previous location had before. And I just wanted to say it had always been a gathering place for a lot of after-hours local restaurant workers from Acton, Concord, Westford, Littleton, as well as a lot of public service people who work evening shifts. And I really wanted to keep, I really wanted to keep the place that, where we could serve those hours until midnight, though most weekdays we are closing at 11:00, but weekends, we plan to stay open until midnight.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from board members? Peter?
Just so I understand, this is a former tailgater site?
That is, that is the location. No, there's totally different ownership.
Yes. Questions? Okay. Do I? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, great, you're all set, so thank you very much. Okay, and up next, we have Representative Benson. So Joan, if you want to come up.
Hello, thank you so much for having me tonight. I think it's my first time here solo, so that's kind of crazy. So normally, I do come in here earlier prior to the House budget debate, but we all had very different schedules this year, so that made it a little more challenging. So I'll give you sort of a general update and then kind of go through some of the highlights from the budget. So I am in my fifth term, excuse me, serving Acton, half of Acton, and five other towns in my district. And I currently am Chair of the Committee on State Administration and Regulatory Oversight. That is new for me as of July 30th. Prior to that, at the beginning of the session, I was Consumer Protection and Professional License Chair. And there was some mid-session jumbling because of Brian Dempsey's retirement. So in my new role, we deal with everything around the functioning of state government, including procurement law, land swaps, as we have done here in Acton before, and anything around open government and transparency in government. So through my chairmanship on that committee, I am Chair of the Public Records Commission. I sit on the Open Meeting Law Commission with the Attorney General's Office. And, and we are, especially in the Public Records Commission, we just had our third meeting of that body and are looking at the historic exemption of the legislature and the executive offices under public records. So we are gathering testimony. We're hearing from various groups, good government groups in the Commonwealth, and looking at what history kind of prompted that exemption in the first place. So we're doing our due diligence. We need to have a report and recommendation to the legislature by December 1st. So we don't have a lot of time, and we are looking at several more meetings before making that report. I do still serve as Chair of the After School Time, After School and Out-of-School Time Coordinating Council for Massachusetts. In that body, we work cross-agency and with providers to try to look at all the barriers to making sure every child has access to a high-quality after-school program. And part of that is also collecting research and commissioning work around the benefits of high-quality after-school programming. So through that, actually, in the budget, we were able to secure quite a large increase, including a data-sharing pilot program to encourage school districts, providers, and the state to share information around student success so that we can really craft almost an IEP-style environment for students in after-school programs, to provide those wraparound services from the school day. And so through that and over the summer, we're hoping to really reduce learning loss and help our students succeed. And that's sort of the name of the game. And so, you know, we will be finishing up that work this fall, and I'm really excited. That's been several years of work. We are going to be making recommendations and also issuing a report to the legislature on our recommendations for breaking down those barriers for students. So with that, I will, unless you have questions about general areas, I can jump into the budget. Okay. So, so the budget, the House completed our budget debate in four days in the last week of April. And we actually had a fairly modest increase. If you read the Mass Budget Policy Center report on the House budget, it's only, I think, 2/10ths of 1% increase to the overall budget that the amendment process added. But part of the biggest areas of addition were relating to senior services. So I just thought that was kind of great and interesting. Those of us who've been working in these areas for a long time and trying to promote high-quality supports for seniors, we were able to secure large increases there, including in mass health senior care, for a total of $3.59 billion in that line item. We also increased funding for Meals on Wheels and increased the COA formula from a $10 per student formula to $12 per student, per senior, sorry. I'm mixing my, my areas here. So I think that provides a lot of resources for towns and in providing those really important services to seniors, especially Meals on Wheels, something that has been struggling, both from federal dollars and stagnating a little bit in the state. We added a large sum of money to that program to make sure that our seniors are well-cured for. So some of the other areas, Chapter 70 was increased by $30 per pupil guaranteed for every single school district. Local aid was increased by 3.5% over last year. Special education circuit breaker will be funded at $300,250,000. We increased regional school transportation by $1 million through the amendment process for a total of $63,521,000. We were able to secure funding for the Acton Maynard Shuttle Service, which is something that has been a great asset to the area, at $75,000. The Mass Cultural Council received a $550,000 increase through the budget amendment process, which is fantastic. And I have to say, at least from my district, that's probably one of the biggest line items that I hear from constituents about. So I think it's really great that so many residents of Massachusetts really see the value in arts and culture in their communities. So I think that's wonderful. And that I, of course, I said Meals on Wheels, that was a $750,000 increase in the budget amendment process. So some other areas that might be of interest to you. The 495 Metro West Suburban Edge Commission, which Kate Hogan has just spearheaded and really took the lead on. We earmarked $100,000 for that program. Smoking prevention and cessation, $500,000 increase through amendments. And this week on Wednesday, which is not today, which is in two days, we will be voting on H-4901, or 49, or yeah, 4901. It's to raise the age to purchase tobacco to 21. So these kind of go hand in hand. We also approved a $2 million increase for the Commonwealth Transportation Fund. Narcan bulk purchasing was made legal in this and funded at $1 million for all of our first responders. We added $139 million to substance abuse addiction services, including creation of five new centers with beds for treatment. We created an Office of Health Equity. One of the big areas that we continue to see in healthcare delivery and outcomes is disparity based on race, income, region, and all of that. And so we have created an office that will focus on those areas and look at closing those gaps. $4.2 million Veterans Outreach Centers. We changed language for the Comptroller's Office. This came through my area of the budget, to really spell out the powers of the comptroller to look specifically at areas like payroll. This was spurred by some of the state police issues that we have heard of, heard about in the press, to make sure that those powers are clearly articulated for the Comptroller's Office. Part of that as well, we've eliminated Troop E from the state police, the Turnpike Troop, and distributed those officers among the different barracks. And so that allows for a distributed oversight over those folks, which I think will help with some of the issues we've seen. An additional $2.9 billion for the Department of Fire Services. And yeah, I think, oh, one other thing that I think we have to remember. So the budget came in at just below $41 billion. Half of that, $20.691 billion, is healthcare alone. And so when we talk about healthcare costs, we talk about it for individuals, we talk about it for businesses. It's a huge issue for the state and, and for the towns, I know. So I think this is something we need to continue to. So I think this is something we need to continue to work on. There will be a healthcare bill coming out of the House, but as you know, the Chairman of Healthcare Finance passed away rather suddenly this spring. He was working on legislation but hadn't completed it. We are taking up that mantle. It's, it's, it slowed down our progress a little bit in that area, but we will be having a bill come out at some point before the end of session, which ends July 31st.
Okay, are there any questions? Jaylen, want to start?
Thank you, Representative Benton. I wanted to say that Katie, I don't know if you've heard her announcing about the Cultural Council's movie, annual movie festival. I'm, I'm the liaison and I'm always trying to push them, even though I can't go to a lot of their meetings, because they meet on Monday nights. But they take from Mass Cultural Council's allotment, every year they get a little chunk, it's probably under $10,000. And they, they spend months deciding among all the applications, and they meet out like $500, $1,000 is a big chunk. And then they have a reception at the end of the year in the spring for all of, and you've been there, I've seen you there with some of the, especially the Box Pro Selectmen. I don't, Acton Art, Acton Selectmen Art, as inclusive as it was there this past spring, but, but, but it's just sort of extraordinary what you can do with a little bit of money and just give so much pleasure. So I have to say, I appreciate that. I had, I had a question about what is going on with zoning reform? I'm, I'm on this Mass Municipal Association Committee that's supposed to be studying the, like, the, the housing, the Governor's Housing Choice Initiative and the legislative proposal, and then presumably all the other two competing proposals that the House and the Senate have. But I didn't know if, I don't know very much about what goes on on Beacon Hill, but I don't know if they're now in a conference and they're trying to work out the differences between the House and the Senate bills, or if there, there, there's a good chance that they'll even move anywhere, because this seems to be a sort of every, an annual event, and it never goes anywhere, so.
Yes, so we did pass a housing bond bill, but that's different than zoning. The House and the Senate both did that. Now, as far as zoning goes, I'm not on the Housing Committee, so I haven't seen the product coming out of there. But that has not risen up to be voted on in the House yet. So we'll wait and see what comes out of basically Ways and Means at this point, and if that rises to the surface in the limited time that we have. So, you know, I can't give you very many details on that, because it's still in committee and in being worked on.
Peter, any questions?
Just a couple. Hi, Jen, how are you?
Very good.
On the tobacco stuff, are e-cigarettes the same, are regulated the same as regular tobacco?
Yes. So e-cigarettes will be defined in law, which they currently aren't, and they will be regulated as well as the fluid that you would purchase to refill them. That would, there would be requirements around child-safe packaging and, and other requirements and regulations around that as well.
Okay, great, because I've been seeing articles recently about the increase among teenagers of that.
Yep.
So I was speaking with Stuart Saginaw, who is the Chairman of the Statewide Community Preservation Coalition, and he was talking about the legislation to increase the filing fees at the registries, which didn't make it through the budget, but there's some maneuvering going on that it may come back to Conference Committee. Could you explain that?
Yes, sure. And I was a co-sponsor of that amendment in the budget, because it's vitally important with so many more communities taking advantage of this program, we need to increase the funding of it. And so we did not get that through on the House side. My understanding is because, I don't know if I should say this in public, but because the Senate Chair of Ways and Means, this is a large priority for her. And so what you see is, there is, this is a long process, right? And so, you know, we're only at Phase Two and a Half of, you know, six-part saga of passing the state budget. And so oftentimes you will see some finagling like this, you know? This is something that hopefully the House will be able to give away in order to get something in Conference, kind of thing. But we know it is a big Senate priority, so I'm going to be pushing for that to come out of Conference.
Joan, nothing? Okay, no, nothing for me, just thank you, certain things like the Acton Maynard Shuttle are extremely important and the increased support for services, so, for senior services, we definitely really appreciate and trying to make very good use of here. And, you know, as much increase that we can get for regional transportation aid, in particular for the schools, I think is very important. It's always underfunded when the regional districts, as you know, are required to provide it, so it's, it's tough.
There's also a Regional Transportation Commission that was formed in the House budget as well, so I'm hoping that will be fruitful. Two other things I'll just quickly mention before, not because you asked, but because it occurred to me. One is the Special Education Circuit Breaker. For this current year, this current fiscal year, we were able to secure an increase in a supplemental budget to approach the 75% full reimbursement rate. We still believe we will get to the full 75. We're at 72.5 right now. Some of that money is held aside as a pothole fund, and if it's not claimed by school districts who have exceedingly high cost, then that will be rolled into the circuit breaker and get us all the way to the 75% reimbursement. So I think that, for school districts, I heard from them this year that they were very concerned with the number of applicants into that funding, that it was, the reimbursement rate was dropping throughout the year. So we were able to boost that up. So that's one. Two, Chapter 70. We did add that $30 per student incremental increase. Well, not so incremental, I mean, significant, but we are also phasing in the second year of the Foundation Review Budget Recommendations. And so we're, we are increasing the, the assumptions around health insurance costs in that. So not only is there that increase, but there's also a basic increase in the formula to start to correct those aged assumptions as part of the formula.
Great. And if anybody wants to see a visual impact of the cost of healthcare on the state budget, the Pioneer Institute puts out a really great infographic that shows just in bubble form the different kind of pots of money. And, you know, if you look at EOHS's budget, it is, you know, again, the majority of state spending. It's incredible to see, not everybody's as lucky as the Town of Acton, which has been able to decrease our health insurance costs actually going into FY19, which is incredible and due to a lot of hard work. But that, that is not the case statewide or, of course, nationwide. So I will allow for limited public comment. Questions, as always, should be addressed to the Board, and then we can, it's not a back-and-forth with the representative, that's not the time for this.
So I was curious, I'm in support of the increases to these important programs, Meals on Wheels, but, and I was wondering what the increase is in a percentage? Because the dollars doesn't, it's hard to keep track of.
Sure. If the representative has that, but if it's also one that might be better addressed in an email to...
For each of these programs or for the overall budget?
For each of the, for Fed, Cultural Council, and Meals on Wheels.
Oh, gosh. Well, I don't have them all memorized, so I'm, I'm, I can say some are, you know, unrestricted local aid was a three and a half percent increase over last year. Others, I know what the basic increase was in the, in the original House Ways and Means budget, but I haven't recalculated that for the amendments.
Thanks. And I was wondering whether that money was coming from increase in revenues or it wasn't coming from debt, is it?
No, I can tell you, I'm sorry, I should wait for the...
Go ahead.
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair. The increases are, to this budget in particular, are very modest, as I said. It was a total of $79 million on a 40, almost $1 billion budget. And so we were very modest in the increases that were accepted. And that is through revenue growth projected in the state. It is not through borrowing. We do not, absolutely do not, put operational costs like salary in borrowing, except I do have to say that the MBTA, when I first came into the legislature in 2009, part of our transportation reform was also moving some salaries out of borrowing into operational budget. And because through the big dig process, some of those salaries had been rolled into debt, which is a very big no-no. Anybody who serves in a local town knows this. And so my understanding is recently, just in the last year or so, there has been some effort afoot in the MBTA to start moving some salaries back into debt. And so that's something the legislature is going to have to keep an eye on. I'm hoping that the Auditor's Office, the Inspector General's Office, and the Comptroller's Office will also be following this very closely. So part of the reason why we really felt we needed to beef up the Comptroller's Office and their delineated powers in the state was to make sure that these are the areas that they're paying very close attention to.
Thank you. And I just have a couple comments. The suburban edge, I'm in favor of that, if it's a low F.I. And one of the reasons I say that is because the other future project or whatever it is that is getting subsidized by the state, we pressed to have sustainability be part of their charter and their mission, and then they turned that around to, to put sustainability as being sustainable as an organization. So if you can see the irony of that. But, and then I'm totally in favor of the beds for treatment, I think that's wonderful. We also need shelter beds. There's a severe lack of shelter beds in this area. And I appeal to you to do what you can to not let partners take over Harvard Health Insurance. I think that's a real mistake to consolidate our healthcare even more. And my last comment is about the 4075 Housing Choice Bill that's being pushed by the Governor. And just to explain, if people don't know about this, this is a bill at the state level to take away power from town meeting to reduce the vote on zoning for areas designated by the state, we applied to be one, parts of the town, from a two-thirds vote to a 51% vote. And that would move the vote to the Board of Selectmen, and they may like that, but maybe we don't. So we're hoping that, at least a lot of us are hoping, that you don't vote for that, that the housing crisis is in the area of income that is not being addressed by the Housing Choice Program and the, actually, the bond bill also. It funded for 80% AMI, and so that's what's going to get built. It's not for people that really need housing. So, thank you.
So just around housing, I will say that we did increase MRVP supports. So rather than shelter beds, really trying to move people out of temporary housing into permanent housing. And so providing supports for rental housing, I think, is better for kids than better for families.
Great, thank you. Yes, MRVP is a mass rental voucher program. Franny?
Hi, Franny Osmond. I had, I just wanted to say I appreciate any support, and I don't know if there's anything we can do about support for the RTAs, the Regional Transit Authorities. And I might have missed an answer. Is that still up in the air and is there anything?
Well, everything is still up in the air until the House and Senate complete their work, go through Conference Committee, and then the Governor comes back with line item vetoes. The House increased the RTA budget by $2 million. I think the Senate will do more. I think this is part of that sort of back-and-forth between the House and the Senate. You know, we increased the earned income tax credit pretty dramatically in the House budget. It'll be interesting to see what the Senate does. So there's a lot of, you know, like I always said, the Governor, you know, when he files his budget, we take a look at it and then we throw it out and we start over with our own budget. And that's what the Senate does as well. And so it'll be interesting to see how some of these areas shake out. One thing I always do say, though, is the best way to make sure something is in the budget is to make sure it's in the Senate and the House budget. And it's identical, both for language and dollar figures.
Oh, that's great. That's a great segue to my other question, because I don't totally follow this, but as you know, I'm on the North-South Rail Link Working Group that would make so we don't have two train systems in our state, and that they would be connected. And the Senate has put $10 million, thanks to Eldridge, Feeney, and O'Connor, into the Senate, into the bond bill. And I wanted to ask if you were, if you had considered asking Speaker Delaio to concur with that $10 million that would be in the bond bill?
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, thank you, Jen, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have got our committee liaison assignments. So I put together and just updated the, the kind of draft assignments from last year. John has indicated to me that he is willing to take all, on all of Ching Tsang's former assignments, and I understand that he has talked with you, Janet, and Peter, and that, Janet, you're willing to give up FinCom, so he would take that on. Is that correct? Okay. And then Peter, he said you would be willing to give up, I think, South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee and, I'm trying to remember, it was something else.
Counts on aging.
Counts on aging, yes.
Yeah, I met with them this afternoon, they had their monthly meeting, and I did tell them that John would become their liaison, so.
Okay.
That's fine, you know? Is there any other comments you had? Because I had one other issue.
I think that's, I mean, just because we were looking at, it was a little unbalanced, so that would bring everybody a little bit more in line with, with each other. What was your other comment?
You know, at one point I thought, and I don't know where it came from now, that the charge to the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee had a selectman actually as an alternate member of the committee. So the Board appointed me as an alternate member. I'm not sure that's true. I can't find where that came from. And I don't know if I can find the original charge of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, but it may not be true. So John has been the FinCom, and I haven't talked to John about this, but he's been the FinCom appointee to that committee. He's now been replaced, but he's, he came to the last meeting, and I think he intends to stay involved. So assuming it goes back to just being a liaison instead of an alternate member, I would like to talk to John about him being the liaison. I mean, I would still stay involved, but if he's going to be going to every committee meeting anyway, I don't think we need two selectmen on that.
Yeah, he expressed an interest to me in that one, so maybe we can make him, I, you know, there's a couple on here, it's like the Main Street and the 53 River Street, we're actually members of those and not liaisons, but I put them on there.
And the CPC also.
And CPC, yeah, similarly, so it's more...
By, by also, yeah.
So why don't, Steve, do you think that the clerk would have a copy of the charge for the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee? Yeah.
Okay, well, if it's, if the charge says that there should be a member of the committee, that's fine, but I would propose replacing John with, me with John anyway, so.
Well, so we'll just move that there to note it, and then we can figure out if we need to make vote him an actual member. And I did, just in the mail that I had here, have a note from MAPC saying that we hadn't filled our representative seat, but I believe that's Joan, I believe we had selected...
We did that.
Right?
A year ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so I got a letter from them, so I'll just send an updated...
Yeah, MAPC and Magic, I think, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, so this was, this was for MAPC specifically, but I'll update the letter to them so they know that you're the representative for the Town of Acton. So I will do that. Okay, do any of you have any other questions or concerns with their assignments? Otherwise, I don't think we need to vote on, we can just note the changes. And everybody, go for it as is, and as a friendly reminder, please continue to do your selectman reports before every meeting so that we know what everybody has been up to. Okay, up next is the Volunteer Recognition Recipients. Peter, do you want to talk about that a little bit? And I see Lisa's put in a draft kind of itinerary for the evening, so thank you, Lisa, for putting that together.
Okay, we're ready to go Friday. We have our citations that we will be presenting to each one of the people who have been nominated for the Colonel Francis Faulkner Senior Award for Exemplary Volunteer Service. We can all announce our picks tonight. What we thought was, we would introduce these, it's from, is it from 5:00 to 7:00? 5:30 to 7:30? Okay, 5:30 to 7:30, so we would have a meet and greet and refreshments to start, and then at 6:30 start handing out these aw... And then at six thirty, start handing out these awards. And each selectman would, uh, take three minutes to recognize their candidate and, um, talk a little bit about why they felt this person was, uh, deserving of this award. So, um, other than that, I don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay, great. Why doesn't everybody, um, announce so folks know who they have, um, selected? So Joan, do you want to start with who you will be honoring?
I nominated Billy Plough.
Is that many committees?
Yes. Billy's been active in town. When I used to sit on the Board of Selectmen and sit over there, we would watch him go up the stairs to wind the clock. So starting out as a fireman, he's on the Historic Commission and the Cemetery Commission right now. But he's been active in town for many years. Leads the cemetery tour at Halloween.
And has literally helped write the book on the history of Acton. Peter?
Uh, I nominated Susan Mitchell Hart, who was, uh, on the Community Preservation Committee for probably 15 years. Recently resigned. Uh, Susan has been instrumental in, uh, acquiring open space for the town and also served on the East Acton Village Planning Committee. Um, so I want to recognize her for her help in, um, expanding the amount of open space that's available in town.
Great. Janet?
Um, I nominated, uh, Bob Guba, who has been on the Land Stewardship Committee since it started, I think, in the 1990s. Um, he is, he's an engineer by training. He's also an excellent carpenter. So he is the person who put together the plans that they followed, put together the boardwalks, um, to build some of the bridges. Um, and he is, he is not forgiving. If you screw up in building anything, he will hear from him. Um, and this includes some Boy Scouts who do their Eagle Scout projects. God forbid, they, they should mess up on the instructions, which are very exacting. But, uh, he still hikes all of the lands. He hikes in other places. The man is 90 years old and he is still going strong. Um, and he's really a testament to good health if you keep active all of your life, so.
Great choice. Um, John is not here, but John has selected Bob Evans. Um, and as he served with Bob on, on the Finance Committee, Bob's been on the Finance Committee for, I don't know, 100 years. Uh, but he is 17 years, something like that. And he's, uh, stepping down, uh, at the end of this year. So, um, a great opportunity to thank him for his many, many years of service to the town. Um, and finally, I selected Joe Will from, um, well, my liaison committee that I'm on with him is the Recreation Committee. He's also on the Dog Park Committee, the Cemetery Committee, the Land Stewardship Committee. Um, and he is a very humble person who tried on at least two occasions to talk me out of nominating him, um, as he felt that other people were more deserving. Um, but, uh, in part for that reason, I, I do think that he need, he deserves, um, recognition. He's at, I see him at most open space committee meetings, even though he's not on that committee. Um, he's very dedicated to recreation and open space in our town in a lot of senses and, uh, has spent a number of years, um, volunteering his time to the town to, to do that. So, um, again, it, we, uh, 5:30 PM on Friday evening at NARA, if you're already there for the Brewstream and Rail Trail, stick around. And if you're not, come on down. Um, and it's a, a great opportunity. We had the first one last year and we're really looking forward to the event this year. So thank you, Peter and Lisa, for everything to put this together. Okay, so no other questions or on that? Okay, up next, we have the request for the waiver of sewer privilege fees for Craftsman Village at 184 Main Street. Steve, is there somebody here from engineering tonight? Or do you just, I mean, they gave us the memo.
Right, I mean, I mean, the main issue, uh, as the, as the memo points out is, uh, the selectmen and sewer commissioners, uh, have kind of this, uh, four-part question as to whether, uh, a project is eligible to have privileged fees waived. Uh, first question is the intensified use required, requiring the privilege fee a local initiative project or a similar type of project as supported by the Acton Zoning Bylaw? And it is an affordable housing project. Uh, the second question is the intensified use requiring the privilege fee providing a public benefit such as affordable housing, historic protection, open space, or other benefit as interpreted by the Sewer Commission? Is that's really something you guys need to, uh, decide? Uh, three, is the applicant requesting the relief agreeing to pay an interest rate for the interest period starting upon the issuance of a sewer connection permit or building permit to the date of the occupancy permit? And this is not really applicable because it's a relief from the privilege fee. And four is the applicant requesting the relief in good standing with the town and that no taxes or fees are outstanding as either an individual or as a corporate entity. And there are some outstanding taxes of $11,251. And there is a MUNIS report, uh, attached.
Selectmen have any questions or comments? Peter?
Yeah, just for people who haven't read our package, um, the total number for this connection fee, these are just for the affordable housings, right?
Right.
Yes.
Which is, uh, which is what, two out of five or something like that? There's, anyway, it was $86,000, uh, and their request for the, for those units. And they're requesting a waiver of, uh, approximately $25,000. So they would still be paying $61,000. I guess that's for the total development. And so 86,000 for the total development to exempt the two affor, uh, one or two affordable units that are there, uh, that's a, an exemption of $25,000. So a total, um, betterment and sewer fee of 61 instead of the 86.
Correct. Any other questions from board members? Questions from the audience?
Sarah Fredericks from West Acton. Um, so this is one of the projects I was talking about earlier where the developer could be making his 15% required profit, um, with four units, four smaller units. Uh, these are 2,200 square foot units with gas fireplaces, um, very luxury units. Um, and supposedly this is an affordable housing program. So as I see it, you're taxing the people that are living on the sewer to lower their price, their property values. When we have a ready solution to deed restrict the units up on 2A. Just as an example, the, the three-bedroom units on 2A are 1,600 square feet. So you're looking at 600 extra square feet for these units. Uh, eight of them on a, a parcel that's less than an acre. And I don't think that we should, the developer is making $500,000 on this, um, minimum. And, um, the four-unit project would be about $250,000 profit. So, uh, effectively, they're making hundreds of thousands of dollars off of us extra, lowering the property values, and then you want to give them this subsidy as well. So I urge you not to, thank you.
Okay, Janet?
Um, I don't, I don't know what units. If you're talking about all the apartment complexes and condos on 2A that, um, you know, aren't, you know, aren't deed restricted, I don't know if you're talking about, um, this came up at the last meeting or at the meeting where I was still chairman. And, uh, we had a wild and crazy Citizens Concern section, segment when people were talking about, um, the issue of deed restricting units came up. And I, you know, top people were talking about buying, the town buying up all those, uh, those properties. And just a couple of million dollars to buy up all the properties and deed restrict them. But, you know, it's not going to cost a pittance to buy properties to deed restrict, so.
Yes, just may Madam Chair address that?
Briefly.
Yes, so, um, the idea is to buy them down. So we're really, um, selling them or renting them for AHA. And we're looking at the cost of like a hundred to $200 a year, um, to get the program started. And then if it works, then we go for a transfer tax that people that buy and sell a lot of apartments, I mean, uh, units in Acton, then pay for the project. So, uh, we've got a couple of people that are coming to the table. Charlie Kedlec, An Ping from Planning Board. Steve Barrett's making up a spreadsheet. And we're looking for a Board of Selectmen liaison to come and listen and, uh, see if they like the idea and, uh, maybe bring it forward. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Barrett has not been involved as far, as, as far as I know, so. Except for one meeting.
I sat, yes, and he was.
Yeah, I know. But I, but I, you know, you, you still need to, you need, your group needs to work on the proposal because I understand, I'm aware of the proposal. And there are some obstacles that you need to overcome, uh, which the Department of Revenue has delineated. Counsel is also kind of flagged. And so I think that, uh, before this proposal goes any further, you really need to, uh, do a little more, uh, work.
Oh, yes, certainly. Um, he, he gave us, uh, counsel's feedback and we talked, we're talking about having a separate agency. But then ACHC said, well, why don't you, why don't we do it? So we've got some talks that need to happen, but we first need to see the spreadsheet, which was going to be prepared. And we were going to look at it after town meeting, so that's kind of where we're at now. Thank you.
Are you working with ACHC?
Well, we want to.
Cause I am not aware that you are.
We want to bring the spreadsheet with us to address ACHC. And we're waiting for Steve to give us the spreadsheet. And so we thought, well, gosh, if we're gonna have Steve present the spreadsheet, then we might as well invite ACHC or anybody else to it too, so we can all ask questions at the same time. So that's what we're working on right now is a time. So if people want to come before 30, 5 o'clock someday in the next couple of weeks. Would you like to be our liaison?
Um, I don't, I, I don't know enough about this, so that, no. I think, I prefer to have, not to be the one involved in, in developing proposals. I like to see something a little bit more formed, um, by people with their own, on their own time, but, you know.
We hope that you will come to the meeting or let us, uh, brief you on the progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter?
I was just gonna clarify, this particular development on Main Street, which is, uh, not far from the Discovery Museum on the other side of the street, uh, is proposed for eight units. Um, and so two of them would be affordable, um, at 2,000 square feet. And the affordable units would be selling for $215,000. Uh, I think one of the issues with great road units is for 1,600 square feet tend to be one and two-bedroom apartments. And I think three-bedroom apartments for larger families, um, uh, who are, uh, moderate income, um, is probably an advantage to doing something like this rather than buying condos on Route 2A.
Okay, and I'd like to keep this conversation related to the topic at hand and not to the broader issue of affordable housing. So I'm not gonna allow follow-up. Um, so the question before us is related to the, um, whether we want to waive the privilege fee for, and connection fee for these two units. So, um, is there a sense of the board about whether or not this meets the test? I think obviously it seems that right now they don't meet, um, number four. I think we probably, if we are inclined to otherwise say that they meet the other criteria, that we could write a motion that we'd approve it upon them paying outstanding taxes. Um, so what is the board's inclination? Okay, but after that, you think you'd be inclined to approving it?
Yeah, I would, I would move that we grant the waiver, but provide it that the developer pays its back taxes.
Okay, any other further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on, we are going to now talk about the Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Discussion. Um, Andy, do you want to come up for that? Or are you hoping to sit anonymously in the audience? Not so anonymously now.
I mean, I can say just a few words that I know of.
Yeah, why don't you come up and say a few words that you know of? And then I have, we have in our packet the memo from Roland. And we also, I have a note from John Benson that, um, I will read because he spoke, uh, to the MPO and then we can talk about some of the, the issues.
Okay, so I'm Andy Brockway. I'm Chair of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. Um, as everybody knows, the, the, the vote at the town meeting, uh, fell short by a few votes. Uh, subsequent to the meeting, uh, the Steering Committee held, uh, a meeting last week. We met with representatives from the Green Acton Committee, Committee, as well as, um, Chris Starr was there, uh, representing, you know, the interest in Bueno Asano. We, uh, at that meeting, we agreed to meet next Tuesday, May 15th at 7 o'clock. It's gonna be in the RJ Gray School Cafeteria B, which is the small cafeteria. Turns out there was no real place to meet. But the purpose of that meeting, I think, is to sort of go through the plans as what they are, sort of give some background on what factors went into it, and to discuss some of the concerns that the people have. So for example, we know people are concerned about the loss of trees, the, certainly the impact on Bueno Asano, uh, the theory, the idea that the plan is car-centric and a few other, I, you know, a few other issues. So that would be the first step in some sort of discussion. Um, and I'm not sure what will come out of it, but at least it's sort of a discussion, uh, in terms of plan. The, back in February, the 25% design submission, those plans were submitted to DOT for review. Um, there's presumably they're ongoing, still reviewing that. We have not heard yet on when, what date they would be, uh, ready for a town, uh, public hearing here, public meeting. The working theory is that it'd be June or July, but again, we don't really know that. Um, and at this point, there's, I don't see any particular reason to, uh, not go forward with that. So at that hearing, people will have an opportunity to sort of offer their opinion on the plan both for and against. They can do that already now, uh, before the hearing, uh, and they can do it even after the hearing. My understanding is that John Benson and Roland went to the MPO meeting last week, uh, to just sort of give them a little bit of a sense of where we are as a town on this and to try and get some feedback on, you know, where, what, what might happen and what's the timing if we wanted to continue forward.
Yes, so, um, my understanding is just John was able to attend with some, uh, prep and other things from Roland. Um, and he kind of explained a bit of the background and, and that it failed by a small number of votes to meet the two-thirds threshold. Um, uh, but that we would be, um, that there is still some of the supplemental engineering funds available. Um, and, uh, that we would be talking about it at our meeting tonight. Um, and I think they, they wanted to know whether or not the town would be, um, still supported the project, um, in particular, still supported going through with the 25% design, um, uh, hearing and all of that process, and whether, um, we would plan to go back for another town meeting, either at the special town meeting in December or the annual town meeting in April. I don't think we have to tell them which one, but, um, tonight. But, um, just in general, if, if we were, are supportive of continuing, um, with the project and going back to a town meeting, um, by April. Um, and there is some concern that we could lose our place on, on the tip. Um, right now, it sounds like maybe we would only fall back to 2023, but I think a lot of that depends on, on, uh, the next steps and, and what happens with those. Um, so that's really kind of the big question for the board tonight is do we want to move forward, um, at this point? Do we want to halt it, um, before the 25% design public hearing? Or do we want to move forward, um, and express to the MPO that we intend to go back to a town meeting either in December or, um, April? Unless there's anything else from your understanding, Andy, of what we need to discuss?
No, I mean, I, I think one of the things that, you know, we've talked about at town meeting, which I still think is true, is that obviously the Bueno Asano is impacted by all of this. And so, one of the things I think we need to do as a town is sort of be involved actively with, uh, this possible discussions with Bank of America and Bueno Asano about that site. And so I think that needs to come from the top-down impetus push that goes through the various departments, that that conversation and that sort of effort takes place. So, cause without that, then, you know, we're, I, we're sort of in the same place.
Right. Yeah, and again, I don't want to imply that, you know, our, our, if the town, uh, the, the board tonight says that, you know, we're willing to move forward with the project, that it's the project as is or as exactly was presented, um, to town meeting at, um, in, uh, April, but rather, you know, working through some of these issues, um, with the hope of bringing back. It would probably be both the requests for additional funding to finish design and, um, for approval related to the acquisitions, um, as well. So we'd probably have both of those questions before us at that time. So there'd be more work done. Um, and it sounds like Kelly's Corner Steering Committee and others have been, uh, working on having these discussions and, and, uh, hopefully improving, um, the communication and the collaboration around this. Um, so why don't I get a general, maybe if board members have initial comments and then open up to the public?
Yeah, I, I, I would support our, our moving forward to the 25% design, um, at least. Uh, you know, this is in my time on the board dealing with this particular proposal. Uh, we missed, uh, in April by three votes, which is, you know, and that's a two-thirds vote. That is not a bare majority vote, that's a two-thirds vote, which means that two-thirds of the people in that room, um, were inclined to move forward. So I said, third time's the charm. Uh, let's try again and do everything perfectly that wasn't done perfect, and wasn't done perfectly, um, knowing that this is sort of a project that has been living for, for decades. I mean, first we had, we had the senior center search and then we had, what was it? The other thing that we had anyhow? There are a number of projects, we, no, North Acton Fire Station. Um, Kelly's Corner is sort of perennial, uh, favorite project, someplace to complain about. project, someplace to complain about. Um, and yet all these proposals to do something about it have in the past failed and people continue to complain about it. So, um, I would like to try, uh, once again. And as I said, we'll do outreach, we'll do all these things, uh, perfectly. And maybe, um, the, the people who are, are supportive will, will turn out and, and push the thing past two-thirds, so.
Great. Peter?
Uh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Um, okay. Uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, I'm certainly in favor of moving forward at this point. Uh, um, there are a couple of misconceptions I think we need to clear up. First of all, I think we need to work with the people who had concerns about the design, the turning lanes, the trees, um, and see if we can resolve those issues, uh, somehow, um, before we go forward with the DOT's public hearing. Um, and, and we're working on that. Uh, this, this was intended to provide a walkable town center for Kelly's Corner. It, it has, really was not related to the development of the Kmart site or some attempt to try to accommodate a developer who is interested in that site. Uh, and in fact, the whole, that was the zoning, that was related to the zoning changes. That is now going to be put aside for a while while we focus more from Kelly's Corner's perspective on, on these infrastructure improvements, um, for safety and, uh, to have a walkable and much more attractive town center was the purpose of this, uh, this whole exercise, which should have gone on for a number of years, and to leverage, um, something like 14 million bucks in, in federal and state, um, funds to pay for the construction of this. Um, it's also, it doesn't require a two-thirds vote. Uh, we, we, the great majority of people who attended town meeting, um, supported this project. And, uh, that's democracy, because majority rules. Uh, the reason it was, uh, required a two-thirds vote is because it was put forward as a bonding item. It's not a zoning change that requires a two-thirds vote by law. It was put forward to be funded with bonding, which requires a two-thirds vote. Now, I understand one of the reasons that, that's a function of the way the budget is drawn up. Originally, the number was $750,000. Um, the appraisal cost came way down when, uh, planning figured out that, uh, we didn't have to pay for the appraisals on the state-owned portions of this project, 27 and 111. Uh, it came down to $450,000. I think we need to, uh, continue to look at the numbers, see if we can bring them down further. Uh, and it is very possible that, uh, this could be built into the regular budget and funded out of operating funds. Uh, that's a, that's a function of ALG and the way the town manager, the new town manager will be making up the budget for next year. Uh, but it, it's not legally required that it, it be passed by a two-thirds majority at town meeting. And, and I don't think, uh, there's any reason politically or for the good of the town that it necessarily is required, uh, requires a two-thirds vote. Uh, majority vote is, um, democracy. So, what we usually do with capital items like this is, is break them out and make them separate warrant articles to, to, whether it's a one-time expenditure, um, to highlight them, but that still just requires a majority vote. It doesn't require a two-thirds vote. So that's possible. Um, but again, we need to look at the numbers. We need to come down in the numbers if we can. We need to work with, uh, the people who had concerns about the design and see if we can, um, meet their, uh, concerns. So I'm in favor of moving forward.
Great. Joan?
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Okay. And I would also say I'm generally in favor of moving forward as well. I do think, um, there's a lot of support for this in town and, and that we can continue to work with people who had questions and concerns. And again, um, not saying we're bringing the exact same proposal back to town meeting. Um, and frankly, if we had even voted these funds, we wouldn't have been, we weren't voting to approve the, the final design at that point. Um, and the funding was to help us, um, fund additional design. So we would have had money to, to do some more of that. Um, so I think that it's worthwhile and, and that we should continue, uh, moving forward. But at this point, I will, uh, open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Hi, Chris Starr, um, sixth Littlefield Road Acton, also representing the Kelly's Corner Coalition. Um, I think we all want Kelly's Corner improved. Traffic, pedestrian safety, parking, the aesthetics of Kelly's Corner, undeniably, all of these things can improve in Kelly's Corner. But I think we differ in how this change will happen, when this change will happen, and how much this is going to cost the town of Acton. Um, I think we all need to ask ourselves, do we want to wait another five years for change to happen? Two of those years, um, Kelly's Corner is going to be turned into a war zone. I've seen this happen in Belmont with the Trapella Road redevelopment project and businesses suffered. Um, I think we have to ask ourselves, do we want to turn the, um, do we want to turn the control of this project over to the state? And with this project, it will definitely be turned over to the state. Let's make no mistake about it, that when the town suggested that the selectmen were going to protect or the town was going to protect the businesses that were going to be impacted, um, that this was somewhat of a hollow promise. Because the state, as Peter pointed out, the state is going to run the appraisal project. The estate is going to run the process on Route 111. So we're going to be turning over the keys to the kingdom to the state of Massachusetts and to the federal government. We have to ask ourselves, do we want to do that? Do we want to cut down the stately trees that line the roads? Do we want to put our school kids in harm's way and make larger curb-to-curb widening of the streets that are going to be difficult for my son, 13-years-old, who's been going over to Bueno Asano and Sorrento's Pizza since he was in elementary school, along with his friends after school? Do we want to put them in harm's way? And do we, ultimately, do we want to destroy the livelihoods and the lives of people like my tenant, Bueno Asano? He's spent seven years. He has kids of his own in the Acton school system. And his life will be destroyed from this. So make no mistake about it, whether it's a 50% vote, two-thirds vote, whether you can get it out of general funds, or where you get the funds. These are real people. These are real livelihoods that are going to be impacted. And I would, I would suggest, after, instead of voicing your opinions towards this project, I think you might make a change and listen to the people. And what the people are saying is we need a locally driven process, one that, you know, reaps the low-hanging fruit, as you said, um, Madam Chairwoman, in your talk at town meeting. You know, we can reprogram the signaling, we can improve the crosswalks, we can change the traffic patterns in a way that can be done now, cheaply, cost-effectively, instead of waiting five years and putting people through heck for two years in a war zone of a construction project. I really, I really don't understand, um, how we can assess this project and how we can go forward with this project without people really understanding the costs. I asked Andy, who's a, a very wonderful public servant on the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee, I said, I asked him, and I asked the committee, and I'm sorry, I mean to use names, my apologies, but I said, do we know what the costs are? Do we know what the costs of the takings are? Do we know what the costs of the parking spaces are? And do we know how many businesses will be destroyed by this project? And I don't know if I've gotten a single straight answer for any of those questions. So I think these are things to think about. I think that we need to reassess how we're doing this and maybe step back a little bit and take another look at that plan. Because if we race forward with a 25% design, which doesn't sound like much, but when I was involved in the Kel-, in the Trapella Road redevelopment, 25% design is it. From there, it's smooth sailing right to the finish line to 2023, five years out, that eventually, with hope, God willing, we're going to have a change Kelly's Corner. Alternatively, we could start now with a low-cost, low-budget approach that takes the money that you've already appropriated for this project and redirects it to something that we can, it, it's some changes that we can make right now. Thank you so much for your consideration and time.
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
Yeah.
Hi, guys. Mike Gowing, Harris Street. Um, I got up and spoke at town meeting, as you know. Uh, I, I would reiterate what this gentleman just said. The 25% plan is the plan. The, the 75% is for contingencies that come up, like, uh, you have to take someone's property you didn't anticipate, or there's gas line problems, or whatever it is. But the, the 25% plan will be the plan that goes forward and that will be the plan that's built. So I, I'm, I apologize that I got into this process very late. Andy, you put a ton of time into this and, uh, and I know it's been outreach to the, the public, um, to try to get input on this. And you get a variety of different inputs, some who want no change, some who want drastic change. Uh, I just want to say that in, in the view of what we're trying to do is Kelly's Corner is the town center, I don't think this meets the standard. This is not a, a complete streets kind of solution. This is an intersection improvement and traffic mitigation solution, in Mastaut's eyes. And I voted, when I was at the MPO, I voted on many of these, so I know what they're for. Um, I don't think that that's what we were, we're looking to do at Kelly's Corner, but I, I just bring the caution up because once we put this on paper at the 25%, we are, that's what we're going to have. There's not going to be changes later on if we decide, well, maybe we don't want to do this, or maybe we don't want to do that. So just be careful of, of what you're putting on paper before the state, because Mastaut will take it and run with it. So just a word of caution. Um, then relative to the planned extra turning lanes, they won't solve the problem. Your problem is your traffic backs up the hill. So people who are wanting to turn, let's say people who are going north on 27, who want to turn onto 111, never get close enough to get into the turning lane because there are 10 cars back. You could affect more change by not having two turning lanes, but sticking with one turning lane and making it longer so that people can get into the turning lane easier. Then you don't have to widen the road as much. It, it changes some of the dynamics. So I just, I throw things like that out there. A lot of people have put a lot of time into it, and I'm not one of them. I, I didn't weigh in on this. So I'm not trying to, to say, you know, wow, you're not doing what I want. I'm just trying to give you the caution. So, thank you.
Do you, Mike?
Sir Fredericks, West Acton. Um, I'm going to agree with these guys. I feel like we should stop the 25% hearing. I thought that going along with the 25% hearing would be like, you know, benign, that we just do it because it's on the schedule. But I agree with Mike, that you go through that, that's implicit endorsement. And I feel like we should ask for more time until we get the design to be what we want. Um, I want to make a couple of comments regarding, um, process. I, I feel uncomfortable that we sent, um, a representative to the MPO before we had this discussion. I feel like this should be what gets sent to the MPO, not something that was done with a couple of people deciding enclosed doors.
We are sending, the discussion tonight is about the official letter that we'll be sending to the MPO, which is the MPO had a meeting and they, John was there to update them on the fact that the town voted it down, but that we would be discussing it at our meeting tonight.
Okay, then I misunderstood, because I thought you said that he was going to brief the town and then how the town feels about this and that. But I, I stand corrected. Um, relative to majority rules, um, I feel like we're all trying to be progressive. Um, and in the progressive circles, the greater, closer you get to consensus, the more progressive that's considered. Um, and I, I agree that we can do small changes now. Um, I'm not of the long-turning lane, um, camp, but I may be convinced. I'm of the no turn, no-left-turn camp, um, during those times. Uh, people who are from here, they already know how to go. We could put signs down at, um, in South Acton to go down, um, Central Street. There's lots of other solutions, what I call low-fi solutions. And I think that the decision that we have to make is whether we want a slower Kelly's Corner, like slower, safer, more pleasant Kelly's Corner, or whether we want a faster Kelly's Corner. And I think that's the big decision that we've got to make. Um, I think that with the idea of slow, I think the process should slow down too. And I hope that you, I urge you to, uh, push this out and not do the 25% hearing. Because as, as Mike says, it's too much of an endorsement for a design that, that we don't like. And, um, if you're trying to do these, you know, tricks around, as I see it, uh, using operating funds to get around the two, 23s, I thank you for the heads up. And that, uh, I, for one, will definitely be, uh, working to inform people that they got to show up for this vote, um, because it might be a 51% vote for the, uh, the speedy Kelly's Corner design. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, uh, my name's Chris Bailey, and, uh, I am a part-owner of the property where Bueno Asano is, Chris Starr's partner. Um, I live in Sandwich, Massachusetts, about an hour and a half from here. And I came up tonight to, uh, try to express, uh, some dismay and frustration with the process that's gone on here. Um, back in 2007, uh, my family, my, my wife and I made a significant decision to invest in this property with Chris. Um, we proceeded to make some arrangements with some of the neighboring properties. Um, and then 2008 happened and all of that fell apart. Uh, we went through a, a couple, uh, iterations and eventually were fortunate enough to, uh, open Bueno Asano on the site, with the hope that eventually we would have an opportunity to redevelop the site. Uh, and along the way in there, we've worked very hard to try to have positive interactions with town staff about what could be done with Kelly's Corner. The, the positive potential is obvious to everyone. In, uh, 2015, uh, I came to a steering committee meeting in this room. It was very early in the steering committee process. Uh, I had a nice meet and greet before the meeting, um, with, uh, the chairman, Mr. Brockway. And, um, we talked about the concern that we had at that time, because there was already a discussion on the floor of eminent domain. And I was surprised that that was being discussed at such an early stage in the process. Um, and then as the discussion went on, we discovered that an engineering firm had already been hired and that they had already done some preliminary concept drawings, uh, that showed the taking of a significant portion of our property. Um, during the meeting, I, I raised a concern, an objection to that idea. Um, and, uh, the town planner, Mr. Bartle, uh, told me in no uncertain terms at that time that if they decided to take my property, that they just would. And that we could take them to court to discuss how much money we would get for it later on. And that was extraordinarily dismissive statement that was made. And that was, you know, three years ago. After that, we tried very hard to have some discussion about modification to the plan. And I'm here to tell you that the 25% plan that we've seen doesn't involve any changes from what that concept plan showed in the first place. And I, I just, I can't understand why that is the case. Because without a visual- And I just, I can't understand why that is the case, because without a visual aid, I won't be able to describe it sufficiently, but the curve of the road coming from Not Your Average Joes and down 27 naturally would curve right through, basically through the Verizon property on the other side of us. But at some point, somebody along the way decided that it would be better to sharpen that curve and bring it back into our property, even though we have a tiny little postage-stamp-sized lot with a very prominent business on it. So last summer, we had a meeting with town staff, Mr. Bartle and his staff, and we tried to have a constructive conversation with them about modifications that might be made to the plan. And I followed up with an email and requested that they look at some modifications to the plan. And then I followed up again. And eventually, I received a courteous email saying that no changes were possible. Hope you can understand. And that process is supposed to be a public process, and it just hasn't been. It just hasn't been a reasonable exchange of ideas. Within the last few weeks, Chris Starr and I went and met with our engineer to start, you know, drafting some plans for what modifications could reasonably be made to the plan, so that we can improve Kelly's Corner, which we all want, certainly as property owners there, we want that. And we pretty quickly got into a discussion about how to modify the curve of the road and how to potentially offer more use of our property in a way that would benefit the area. And just, I'll just give a very quick example. The sidewalk is a significant portion of the proposed taking of our property, a nice wide sidewalk that wraps around that corner and would be on two frontages of our property. So we got into a quick discussion with our engineer about, well, why can't that sidewalk actually run across in front of our building, so that we could maintain our parking? And it would be a more pedestrian-friendly environment, because you'd be walking away from the street, and you'd actually be walking in front of a local business. Seems like something worth exploring. But after how many years of discussions, none of that has been discussed with the town. And it's just one small example of what seems to have happened here. So 25% design, as has been already said several times, isn't just the beginning of the process. It's not 25% of the way through the process. The concept is fully baked at that point. The next 75% is change orders and more detailed engineering drawings. So it seems like common sense to me, for the concerns that have been brought up, and an obvious flaw in the public process that's happened up to this point, that everybody step back and say, okay, you know what? Let's not have a public hearing about approving a 25% plan that clearly doesn't have consensus in town. And before we get a chance to get up and speak, I hear from several of you, we don't need 2/3, we can move forward, we're fine. And again, that's not an exchange of ideas. So I would ask you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Hi, Jason Brady, 15 Larch Road, Acton. I'm the owner and operator at 263 Main Street. I own Bueno Asano. I know, I've heard many of you throw the name around like you're very familiar with it, but I don't really think you guys are, to be honest with you. It's just been a topic of conversation for all the last meetings and conversation tonight. The name Bueno Asano has been thrown around, but no one seems to really care about it, to be honest with you, in my opinion. Everyone speaks of it like they know everything about it, but I really don't think you guys do. It's apparent to me that nobody really does care about it either, or at least the people that are sitting in front of me and some of the other people here. It was evident to me at town meeting that a lot of people in town actually cared about it. And it's funny that the vote was passed by three people. The three people that were there were me and two of my business partners. I think maybe that made a difference in the vote, because I finally started paying attention to this stuff. Because the reality is, I've never really been approached, I said at a town meeting, I'll say it again now, I've never been approached by anybody in this room about anything that's happened here or been discussed. I know I don't own the building, so I'm kind of an afterthought, but if I didn't stand up tonight, I felt like I sold myself short. So I'm just concerned at the fact that, you know, we got that far, the vote was made, and now we're kind of like, you know, back in here again, we're bringing it up again, and you guys are just like, yeah, let's do it. But there's like, to allude to what was said earlier, like, it seems like it hasn't been that well thought out, and/or there haven't been any adjustments made to maybe, you know, make it a little bit easier for Chris's property or the tenants that are there to be able to operate and run their business. I'm all for developing the town. I think it's a great place. I think it would be a great addition to the town. I think we would benefit from it a lot. I just think that there's other ways that we can go about doing it. And if we keep it within the 25% with us, then I think it could be, they'll have more people behind it, and I think it might be more cost-effective, and also won't hurt as many local businesses because of, it wouldn't be as much of a grandiose plan that might shut people down for X amount of time. You know, I'm just concerned, and I'm always concerned about this, because it's kind of just been like lingering out there for a few years now. And when I see people coming onto the property with lasers and all these plans, and they're just like walking by me and looking at me, like they don't want to say anything, but I know what's going on, it's just been kind of frustrating. So to be kept in the loop would be great. I know I might not seem that approachable, but I think if more people are kept in the loop, then we can kind of make this a together kind of thing, and it might be better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Lauren.
Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton, 26 Marshall Path. I think, you know, at town meeting, we heard, you know, what a lot of the issues are, and I was encouraged to hear, I went to Green Acton Land Use meeting, and I was encouraged to hear that the committee and the Green Acton Land Use Committee are going to meet, I believe, May 15, May 15 at 7:00 p.m. So I think that's a good step. If someone said that earlier, I'm sorry, I was trying to watch at home and I couldn't hear. So, you know, I just do think the process should continue. I think if we do bring it back to town meeting, or any kind of meetings, I really think we need visuals. I mean, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there of, you know, what it might look like, what impact it will have on different businesses and the existing infrastructure now. So the more, I know pictures are expensive, but there are all kinds of new software doodads and things that you can do. I know the town of Bedford did it. They put things on Facebook that sort of show pictures of the different intersections and what, you know, they're going to appear like. And so after the more collaborative process, if we could have pictures to bring and advertise and spread the word on whatever the consensus plan is, I think we'll have more strength in, you know, figuring out the best option. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Franny?
Yeah, Franny. Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. I remember years ago, sitting with a bunch of colorful stickies and trying to design Kelly's Corner. And so I've been saying, yes, let's just keep it moving and keep it moving. But what I sort of see keep happening in things all over town, and this is just based on our capitalist system, is that you can't interfere with people. Somebody owns some land, you want to make sure that they can do anything they want with it and get their full investment out of it. At the same time, we want to have some collaborative planning. And I think we have a great opportunity here when we have the owners of the land and the owners of the business saying, we want to come up with some creative solutions. At the time, when we worked with those colorful stickies, I remember I had in mind working with all the businesses and moving the road, and moving this, and making this one way, and all that kind of thing. And it would be great to sit down with them and really try to get creative. And I am, at this point, a little worried about some of the things that other people were worried about in the plan. I always have felt a little bit uncomfortable, and I've told Roland this, when we add turning lanes, I'm always worried that it's just going to allow traffic to go more quickly and won't make it more comfortable for either people turning into the main street or for pedestrians. That always has been something I've been a little bit confused about, and I've told them several times that I'm not convinced. And it was very convincing hearing people talk about the trees, the large ones. I'm not worried about the smaller ones that have to go with certain projects, but there are some really large trees that we could, again, try to do something creative. So I would like to encourage you to try to slow down enough to try to come to some more collaborative decisions, and try to do something out of the box, you know, really, including considering whether the town should own certain properties, something so that we can make decisions that fit us, not purely for the cars. So, and I understand that they put in a big effort. I want to thank the planning department. They're very, very focused on sidewalks, et cetera. So I'm not saying they're not, but enough concerns have been raised. I have to say, I don't like the idea of stopping a whole project for one little place. I think we could find a way to remunerate and move and help and work with the businesses. We don't necessarily have to build the whole town around one little corner, but we need to do something that keeps the business going and keeps pedestrians getting a better and better experience.
Thank you, Franny.
Terr Fredericks, West Acton. I just wanted to state that I had made a comment relative to the infrastructure being connected to the zoning, because at the time when I made the comment, the zoning was on the fall town meeting, the plan was to put it on fall town meeting. So if, in fact, it is not being on the fall town meeting, that certainly would relieve the pressure, I think. Also puts it in context of us as a community, as opposed to what a developer might want. But that comment came from the town's consultant that stood up here in this very room with the presentation, talking about the figures, the F minus, and that the new, the infrastructure project as planned would bring us up to C minus, or something like that, as a term relative to how bad an intersection is. But then after the zoning, then it'll be back down to D minus, or something like that. So in her presentation, it was intimately connected, this infrastructure project. So I hope you do not put the zoning on the fall town meeting, because I think that that will help us focus on us as a town and get a collaborative approach going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terr. Just for everybody watching at home, please look up that presentation, because I'm 100% sure that those figures are incorrect. Yes, ma'am.
Eleanor Matthews, 241 Central Street. I would like to just concur with some of the statements that have been made about taking time, rather than making a decision to go forward with the 25% plan, and really, really think out of the box and think collaboratively between the selectmen and the townspeople on what might be done to come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing nobody else standing. Yes, Peter.
Let me just say that the meeting on the 15th is not just with Green Acton. This is a community forum. Spread the word, get as many people there as you can. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get a room like this. We're going to be in the junior high school in the small cafeteria. Let me ask, could I ask Mike just a question about broadcasting? Mike, does a TV studio have the ability? I know they don't have it wired for television at that, in that room, I'm sure.
They don't, they couldn't do it live, but they could record it and put it out on the trailer.
That's what I was going to ask. If they have a camera, they can record it and put it on. So I'm going to work with the TV people to see if we can get that there.
We'll cover it. It's not a problem, so.
Okay, thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, just a comment on the room. So the room's not that big. And I'm wondering, so I think planning is in here. Any chance we can find another place for planning that night? I don't know what hearings they have. Yeah, there's always the junior high cafeteria. I mean, if we're going to have, the room won't be that conducive to discussion if there are a lot of people. And so I, I'm a little worried about this sort of setup.
We'll look into it to see if there's another place, maybe we could swap. And I'm looking at Lisa and Steve to make a note to make, to look into that, and we'll get in touch with you, Andy, to see if there's someplace else we could.
All right, so obviously, we need to do that fairly quickly, nor given open meeting laws and just giving it, getting out the word to the extent that needs to get out.
Right.
We do plan to have the engineers there, so if there, is my understanding.
Yes, they will be there.
Okay, if there are questions about the alignment of the road, and why they can't be redesigned differently, or why the turning lanes, in their view, might be necessary, or whether we could eliminate them, please come and have those discussions.
Okay, great. Questions or comments, any other additional ones from board or selectman members?
I mean, the only thing I want to say is, you know, I've been a little disappointed in some of the comments around, just some of the implication during some of the discussion leading up to this, that there hasn't been a public process or a transparent process, because this has been going on for years and years and years. And it's not like this is all of a sudden just come out of a back room or out of the planning department, and we're trying to shove it through. This has been something that's been voted on at town meeting multiple times, that's been talked about in numerous public forums, that we've had a lot of public meetings. We have an entire board of the town that's dedicated to this project, that has been working on this, that has public, that all of their meetings are a public meeting. So again, I, you know, that is a part that disappoints me, and that I don't like the implication that all of a sudden we're trying to shove this down people's throats. And again, you know, I understand concerns, and I do think we need to continue to try to work and look at them, and I don't agree that the 25% design is going to be, you know, the final design. And we can try to work on a lot of the issues, but I do think that 2/3 minus 3 people of town meeting voted to support this. And so to me, it's worthwhile to continue to move forward. So with that, can I get a motion? I'd like a motion on directing probably me to write a letter to the MPO to let them know if it's the will of the board that we support moving forward with the 25% design and would intend to this spring or summer, and would intend to bring the funding back to town meeting either this fall or April.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Yep, Franny.
I have a question.
Yep.
I'm never clear what part of getting ready for designing a 25% is public, involving the public.
All of it.
But when a lot of it is done by the staff, it's like, I just want to encourage us to have as many communications between the businesses, the residents, and the staff as possible in that process, which is why I voted to go through with it, because I thought we could do that. I believe we can, but I want to make sure.
Okay, again, that was my point, is that all of this, there have been, I've been at multiple meetings where they've brought iterations of this design, where there has been a lot of outreach. And again, the 25% design hearing at the MPO is a public hearing where they request comment from the public as well. So it's not like, again, it's not as though this design has just come out of nowhere.
Yeah, no, I don't mean that there's been any on-purpose lack of involvement, but I just want to make sure that we, we really, we change the 25, on the way to the 25%, that we take everything that we've heard. I mean, I even voted for moving forward, because, but I just want to make sure that we really include all of these concerns in that process, so that that 25% design reflects them.
So we've already submitted the 25% design. The question was whether or not we want to go forward with the 25% design hearing with the MPO. The town has already submitted a 25% design.
So if they approve it and they are going to fund it, how much flexibility is there changing the design?
Right. Right. We, after twenty-five percent design, you move towards a seventy-five percent design. So, in that period, we can make changes to that. You, I think this would be better to talk to somebody off of, offline, but it, again, we've already submitted a twenty-five percent design. The question tonight was whether the Board of Selectmen supported moving forward with the planned twenty-five percent design hearing at the state level.
Okay. I still am not clear whether you can change it before that hearing.
Can we change the twenty-five percent design?
Yes.
No. Can we change the design after the twenty-five percent design? Yes.
Do you need to get a different permission from them? I mean, if they vote yes.
This isn't the final vote that the MPO would take.
Okay, so they would take a seventy-five percent vote, right, or a hundred percent vote? Okay.
Okay. I will allow very limited comment.
Thanks. I think that your understanding of what a twenty-five percent design is, is not correct, and you might want to talk to some of the engineering people about that because we, we differ on that respectfully. And, for instance, the gentleman that was just here who used to be a part of the MPO apparently completely disagrees with you about that.
So, he was a former selectman and he was a selectman representative to the MPO, just to clarify what Mike's role in the MPO was.
So, he has observed the process considerably.
Right.
I also have observed the process a number of times, and twenty-five percent is a big milestone. And to suggest that we're going to make significant changes to the basic layout of the road after twenty-five percent, I don't think the MPO would be pleased to hear that that was a possibility. It's, it's really, the right time to make those changes is before now, but certainly now, rather than going to a hearing. So, thank you for your time.
Okay. So, moving on, I'd like to do the consent agenda before the last item, just in case there's any questions for the town manager. I think there will be. I will read through these. Please say hold if you'd like to hold any. Number eight, one-day alcoholic beverage license for Claudia Hardy at NARA, June second, twenty eighteen. Number nine, accept the gift of labor from congregation Beth Elahim. Number ten, waiver of fees request, Recreation Department. Number eleven, right-of-way construction permits. And number twelve, request dispost of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library.
Move to approve consent agenda items eight through twelve.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. So, this last one, we're actually not at the point, so you probably can see, Steve, we're not at the point to vote a town manager contract, but wanted to update the public that we are in continuing discussions with John Mangiarotti regarding his contract. And we're hopeful that we might be able to vote a contract later this week or sometime before our next scheduled meeting. So, wanted to talk to people about scheduling a meeting to do that. And one thought I had is that I think many of us will be at the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail ribbon cutting and we'll all be at the volunteer recognition event. So, one thought I had was posting it for five o'clock at NARA and maybe we, and we, we post it. I, the, the one question would be if we think we need an executive session beforehand, but maybe then we could use the bathhouse or some, I don't, you know, I can talk to Kathy about that. But I figured if we're all over there, that could be an option. Otherwise, maybe we can look quickly at dates to see if there's a better time for people to, to do it. So, any thoughts?
You're giving the selectmen's remarks at Bruce Freeman? Did you?
We're, Steve and I are going to talk about that, yeah. But yeah, so would people be available to meet at five on this Friday?
I would be because I'm going to be, I hope to go to the Bruce Freeman thing and I'll obviously be at the volunteer events.
Peter, that works for you?
Yeah.
Joan? It doesn't, if it, if it doesn't, we can talk about other dates. Is it before the volunteer thing or after the volunteer? Okay, well, we do this before, so we do this at five. Yeah, we, so, I don't know if this, I assume, it's a public facility that's accessible to the public. So, can we post a meeting? Thank you. So, can we post a meeting? And then my only question is, do you?
Well, it's got to be an executive session, doesn't it?
Well, that's my question. Do we think we need an executive session beforehand, probably, to finalize any?
Well, and it's, I mean, it's NARA and I, yeah, I mean, it'll, we could find, we could all kind of huddle in one little corner, but, you know, it's, as long as we're not on mic, there's nobody around.
Yeah. So, do, or do you think we could use, like, the bath? No, it's, that's open too. Yeah. Yeah, and go inside the bathhouse and then just vote it in there. Yeah, that will be open if she'll be there. Okay, we'll finalize those details.
The office, if there's an office that we could use, that'd be great.
Yeah. So, we'll finalize, and then we could just meet outside for the public part, and we could talk about how to post that or whatever. Yeah, this.
We stood in the middle of the bowl and nobody's around. Nobody knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I don't think that's true. Okay, so we'll finalize that and post something for, for Friday and hopefully do that then. Okay, so I think that is it. We have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you.